It is now five ten P M. Pursuant to chapter five fifty-one, title five, section five fifty-one point zero four one of the Texas Government Code of the Texas Open Meetings Act, notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville would conduct a regular meeting on Tuesday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, at five P M. Via the Webex teleconference link provided at the City of Brownsville Agenda Center. The members of the public wishing to participate in the meeting hosted through Webex could join from the meeting link or the numbers provided on the agenda. Members of the public who submitted a public comment form will be permitted to offer public comments as provided by the agenda and as permitted by the presiding officer during the meeting. A recording of the meeting will be made and will be available to the public in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. It is now eleven P M. We may call the meeting to order. Let me do a quick roll call. I have Mayor Mendez, Commissioner Cowan, Commissioner Golansky, Commissioner Gowen, Commissioner Neese, Commissioner Tetra, have you joined us? And Commissioner Mongia, have you joined us? Okay, Mayor, so we can move on to the invocation.
Pastor Brad, are you here?
Yes, thank you. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the many blessings we have in Brownsville. We thank you that most of the time it's warm enough that we don't need heat. And we ask you to lead and guide P U B right now. We ask you to lead and guide Urco, everyone that has to do with producing electricity. Lord, for those that are without electricity, we ask you to bless them, especially those that have had pipes freeze and break. And we ask you to bring the help that they need to get their lives back together. Having lived up north for so many years, I know the frustration, misery, and desperation that comes with with broken water pipes and the damage that it can cause. So, Lord, lead and guide each of us in what we might do to help those people. Lord, for those people in our city and around the nation that need healing, we ask you to provide it. For those that have lost loved ones, we ask you to comfort them and bless them. And help each of us to honor those people that we've lost appropriately going forward. Lord God, we ask you to lead and guide all of our leaders, from Washington to Austin to Brownsville. Give them the wisdom they need to bring us back together in unity. But we ultimately know that you're the only one that can really bring us back to unity. And so, Lord, we ask you for that. For this meeting today, we ask you to bless our mayor, our city commissioners, all the department heads, and all the city staff, and anyone presenting anything for the best for the City of Brownsville. And, Lord, we give you all the glory for all of it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. And now we'll have a short moment of silence where we can all add our prayers to what has been spoken.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Our next item is proclamations. Our first proclamation is recognizing Monday, March first, twenty twenty-one, as COVID nineteen Victims and Survivors Memorial Day. This is sponsored by Mayor Mendez and Commissioner Gowen.
Thank you, Laurie. This is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing March first, two thousand twenty-one as COVID nineteen Victims and Survivors Memorial Day. Whereas the first Monday in March has been designated as COVID nineteen Victims and Survivors Memorial Day. And whereas COVID nineteen, SARS-CoV-two, is an illness caused by a virus that can transmit from person to person and has spread across the world, creating a global pandemic and having catastrophic effects on human life, our community, and our economy. And whereas local and state governments, health departments, and public servants have taken bold actions to protect residents, support struggling local economies, and find innovative ways to provide services. And whereas school districts, teachers, students, and parents are grappling with the challenges of distance learning and working to prevent any potential learning loss due to not being in person. And whereas local and state governments, health departments, and public servants have taken bold actions to protect residents, support struggling local economies, and find innovative ways to provide services. And whereas in response to rapid spread of COVID nineteen and stay-at-home orders, essential workers have stepped up to provide critical services to help protect our communities and save lives, sacrificing their own health and safety. And whereas COVID nineteen has had a disproportionate impact on low-income communities and communities of color, exacerbating the inequities already prevalent in our systems, and has further exposed how racism and classism are America's most dangerous pre-existing conditions. And whereas the symptoms and severity of COVID nineteen can vary dramatically, by individual and the long-term health implications for survivors is largely unknown, as many survivors suffer with lingering side effects of the disease long after they no longer test positive. And whereas two-point-three million people worldwide, four-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-nine people in the United States, thirty-nine-thousand-and-one people in Texas, one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-nine people in Cameron County, and seven-hundred-and-three people in Brownsville have lost their lives due to COVID nineteen. And whereas each life, each life lost to COVID nineteen mattered and leaves a hole in the hearts of loved ones, family members, and surrounding community. And whereas public health guidance and policies targeted at prevention, such as social distancing, wearing masks in public, and staying home help mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen, prevent illness, and lessen the burden on individuals and society. Now therefore, be resolved that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville recognize the first Monday in March, March first, two thousand twenty-one, as COVID nineteen Memorial Day, in remembrance of those who have lost their lives and in honor of those who are forever marked by COVID and continue to suffer from the impact of this virus. And be it further resolved that the City Commission urges local residents to continue taking preventative measures, such as social distancing and following public health orders to mitigate spread by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city and on behalf of all of our citizens, done on the sixteenth day of February, two thousand twenty-one. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is proclaiming February fifteenth through nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, as Business Professionals of America Week Porter Early College High School, sponsored by Mayor Mendez and Commissioner Golansky Pisaglia.
Commissioner Golansky is going to read this one. Thank you.
So it's my pleasure to introduce this proclamation, a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating February fifteenth through the nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, as Business Professionals of America Week. Whereas Porter Early College High School is concerned with the business education and training of students for productive, satisfying careers. And whereas Business Professionals of America, also known as B P A, is recognized by the United States Department of Education as a national career and technical student organization, and their vision is to be an innovator in career and technical education, providing students with opportunities for growth through education, competition, community services, and personal development. And whereas Business Professionals of America strives to help students develop essential competencies and pursue careers in business management, information technology, finance, office administration, and other related career fields to aid to the improvement of our economy and the advancement of our nation. And whereas Business Professionals of America has the ability to enhance student participation in professional settings and to accomplish the goals of self-improvement, leadership development, professionalism, community service, career development, public relations, student cooperation, safety, and empowering student leaders to discover their passion and change the world. And whereas the ever-increasing cooperative efforts of career and technical educators and of business and industry stimulate the growth and vitality of our economy and that of the entire nation by preparing graduates for career fields that are forecast to experience the largest and fastest growth in the next decade. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and do hereby proclaim February fifteenth through the nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, as Business Professionals of America Week in Brownsville, Texas, and urge all citizens to take recognition of this event and participate in all the events related thereto in this community, done on this the sixteenth day of February, twenty twenty-one. Congratulations.
Commissioner.
Our next item is presentations. Item one, the Office of Strategic Initiatives Grants Division Annual Presentation for Fiscal Year Two thousand twenty, C M O, O S I.
Thank you. Good evening, Brownsville City Commissioners. My name is Marina Sodetsky, Assistant to the City Manager. It is our pleasure to present to you today the two thousand twenty Grants in Review. The Office of Strategic Initiatives is part of the City Manager's Office and includes the Grants Division. With us tonight is Efent Trujillo, Assistant Director, Athena Burnakis, Grant Manager, and Olga Moya, Grant Writer. We will be highlighting the efforts of our team over the two thousand twenty fiscal year. Made possible due to team effort, the support of our city management and mayor and commissioners. Next slide please. The City Manager's Office team focuses on, I'm sorry, previous slide please. The City Manager's Office team focuses on serving and supporting the City of Brownsville through innovative management techniques and cross-functional efforts. This is our mission statement. On this slide, you will also see the vision statement and our behavioral values for the organization. Next slide. The Office of Strategic Initiatives includes three different divisions. The Community Development Division, Management Analyst Division, and Grant Management Division. The Community Development Division is responsible for administering the U.S. Housing and Urban Development funding. We receive funding on an annual basis and through the programs of C D B G, Community Development Program, Home Program, and Emergency Solution Grant. For the fiscal year two thousand twenty, the city received an annual regular allocation of over three-point-eight million dollars. The Management Analyst Division is where we have our analysts work on with different city departments to effectively address tasks and issues using different techniques, with a focus on change management and project management. We focus on the people's side of change, and this encompasses change ranges ranging from small changes to enterprise-wide changes. We also focus on strategic planning, design thinking, and research. And the third division which we're highlighting today is the Grants Management Division. The Grants team works with different city departments and partners to submit grant applications. And this ranges from different funding sources, including loans, grants, technical assistance, and so forth, and covers federal, state, local, and foundation funding. And so with that, I am going to transition to Ms. Athena Burnakis, Grant Manager. The Grants Division process includes city departments' annual work plans. This is a continuous process throughout the year to best support the needs of the city and its departments. Should there be a fitting grant opportunity, the Grants Division will contact directors with this information. The departments work with leadership to set goals for the upcoming year, and these goals are based off the City Commission pillars. The Grants Division uses this data to develop search criteria and work with the departments to form grant applications for any matching opportunities. Once the city receives a grant, the Grants team works with the project lead to manage the funding and ensure compliance. The work plan also includes assisting departments with sustainability plans for projects and locating continued funding for each project. The Grants Division supports city departments in completing grant reports, as well as evaluating projects to help improve chances for future funding. The Commission pillars were established by the City Commission in two thousand nineteen as a result of strategic visioning sessions. The pillars set forth are economic development, planning, zoning, and redevelopment, infrastructure, public safety, quality of life, and governance, with each pillar targeting areas of city development to further serve our citizens and visitors. I'd like now to introduce Ms. Olga Moya, our Grant Writer. Next slide, please. This graph represents the various funding categories the city pursued over the two thousand twenty fiscal year. The grant requests represent all the Commission pillars and were submitted to a variety of funders, including federal, state, and foundation funding for a total amount of over two-point-seven million dollars in grant applications. Public safety and quality of life are some of the highest represented sectors. Next slide, please. Here, this graph highlights the pillars in which grants were awarded in the two thousand twenty fiscal year. Public safety represents the highest award category, followed by quality of life, economic development, and then equally divided by infrastructure and governance, for a total of over one-point-two million dollars in awarded grants. Or entitlements or secured allocations. Next slide, please. The Grants Division is continuously seeking out opportunities to assist the city to mitigate the COVID nineteen pandemic. Before you, a few highlights of COVID nineteen awarded relief funding with a total in the amount of five-hundred-and-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. Next slide, please. The city was also allocated funds from the F A A, F T A, HUD, and the Treasury Federal allocations, all totaling to twenty-five-million-two-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars. Next slide, please. The city received a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation in fiscal year two thousand eighteen for the renovation of the Quanza Hut to serve as the home of the Canary Public Market. Since the first investment from the Legacy Foundation, the city has leveraged that award to secure design services from U S B A and an additional three-hundred-thousand dollars from Share Our Strength, a national nonprofit organization, for the continued refurbishing of the building. Next slide, please. The City of Brownsville also continues to apply for new and recurring public safety grants from the Office of the Governor and other partners. In total, the city has received six-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars in grant funding. Next slide. The goal of the B T X broadband connectivity initiative is to support efforts led by the City of Brownsville and community partners to advocate for and support the Brownsville Broadband Initiative Service by proven fiber-based infrastructure. Partnership with lit communities was established in late two thousand twenty to analyze data collected with the Connect B T X broadband survey. This data and collaboration with the Grants Division will help in identifying and securing grant opportunities. In December two thousand twenty, in coordination with the Director of Government Affairs, seventy-five-thousand dollars was awarded to the city on behalf of Methodist Healthcare Ministries for the continued broadband initiative. Next slide, please. The city has been collaborating with Kaboom and has since continued this partnership and now friendship over the years. In two thousand nineteen, the city, in partnership with the United Way of Southern Cameron County and R G V Focus, entered into agreement with Kaboom for a playground build to take place in Montevideo Park, located on Alton Mall. Unfortunately, due to the unforeseen circumstances of COVID nineteen, the building was postponed until spring or fall of two thousand twenty-one. Although this was a hard decision to make, we were able to adapt and launched a virtual design week where children were encouraged to submit their park designs through our city website. The city received several submissions and continued to plan for our future build seeking COVID nineteen, if you guys in line. Including the previously mentioned project, our division submitted twenty-five grants throughout the two thousand twenty fiscal year. Sixteen have been awarded and one is currently pending. The division had approximately a sixty-four percent success rate, up fourteen percent from our last fiscal year, in comparison to the national average, which comes in at ten percent. Next slide, please. Here we have a list of upcoming grant applications for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. Please note that this list only represents upcoming grants for the next month. The grants fall under the City Commission pillars of economic development, planning, zoning, and development, infrastructure, public safety, quality of life, and governance. Next slide, please. The available resources that our office provides are maintaining partnerships with local nonprofits while providing peer review and technical assistance, facilitating and reviewing pre- and post-award reporting requirements, promoting community voice campaign with the public for the allocation of HUD funding, and providing training and researching software for the public at the O S I Annual Community Development Summit. Next slide, please. On this slide, we have the location of our office and how we can reach you. We are here to serve our city, and we want to thank you for your time here today.
I'd like to make a comment. I just want to let, to give you a little bit of history and a huge compliment. Twelve years ago, there was no Grants Department in the city, just a few scattered grant writers that worked in specific departments on a part-time basis. A summer science intern at the School of Public Health did a research project for me to look at how well the city did in terms of capturing grant dollars. And at that time, Brownsville ranked dead last in about fourteen different cities of similar size across the city, across the state. We put those numbers to per capita dollars, and Brownsville came in at about thirteen or twenty dollars per capita that was, that was captured in grant dollars at the time, in, in the previous five years, as opposed to places further north and in Texas that were pulling in about seven-hundred-and-some, some odd dollars per capita in grant dollars. That data gave the city management and commission at the time the momentum to, to create a Grants Department that has grown in to the very sophisticated department that you just heard about. So my compliments to all of you for working over the past years to create such, such a viable department. And I'm wondering if at some point you analyze to the, those numbers to per capita numbers, we could actually compare how has Brownsville changed in the number of dollars per capita captured in the last twelve to fifteen years.
Yes, thank you so much, Commissioner, and thank you as always for the support. And we'll definitely put together the, the comparisons with that previous data as far as the per capita over time. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I have a question as well. The slide that you had on, what was it, the broadband initiative?
Yes.
Could you go back to that? Okay, so when it says at the very end there, reliable and affordable broadband internet services by proven fiber-based infrastructures. Now, is that ruling out also the Wi-Fi based? Or is, is that just like for setting up the main infrastructure that, that will include Wi-Fi?
I believe it's the latter, because we, for the seventy-five-thousand, I believe it's the latter, but could, if I can be supported by that.
The, the Methodist grant?
The, the statement, Commissioner.
Okay, the, the statement, it says proven fiber-based infrastructure. So what my question has been all along, are we going to include Wi-Fi for like parks, the bike trails, and just in general out throughout the city? So I haven't been able to get an answer on that.
I can help answer the question, Commissioner. So, yes, wireless is part of the solution. This is referring more so to the broadband plan, but it does not rule out Wi-Fi or wireless options.
Okay, okay, good.
For example, we have different initiatives and working with parks. We've had some of the C D B G, C D B G funding that has helped with Wi-Fi connections. And so there's other, there's different initiatives complementing as well.
Okay, well, it's just, it makes, I was under the impression at the initial onset of this that they were just trying to connect every house with fiber. And, you know, I mean, there's needs to be, you know, a little bit more than just that. So I just hope we're all keeping that in mind. Thank you.
So we want to thank the support of our mayor, commissioners, our city management, our team here. So we're happy to entertain any more questions, or if you'd like more information, please let us know. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, keep up the good work.
Definitely.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay, our next item. Okay, sorry about that. Our next item is our public comment period. We did not receive any public comment forms. So we can move on to consent agenda items one through fourteen.
Thank you. I, this is consent agenda, so I'm looking for a motion.
I'd like to pull one out of order, number thirteen.
Out of order?
Yes.
Or out of this consent, Commissioner?
Correct. Yeah, so that we can vote on it separately.
Thirteen? I, I don't see a thirteen. I've only got one through seven, unless I'm missing a page. Oh, I see it. I see it. Okay, very good.
To the consent agenda.
Sure, sure. Okay, pulling item thirteen. With that, Commissioner, would you make a motion to approve everything else under consent?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second the motion. I'll second.
In a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes, okay? So then, item thirteen, is anybody going to present on that?
Well, I just want to preserve my objection in from the G B I C meeting, so that's why I pulled it out of the agenda, because I'm not going to tacitly consent.
Okay, on item thirteen, is, is anybody going to present on that item, or do we just want to go ahead and have motions? Mr. Renal, how would you like to handle that?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was on mute. We have no presentation. Mr. Renal, if there are any legal questions, otherwise staff did not prepare anything for the item.
Okay, but the, the, the commission and the G B I C board as well took this item up a few days ago, voted on it. So then this is just a consideration in action. So is there a motion on this? I know Commissioner Golansky wants to state her objection, so we can get to that. Is there any motion to approve this item?
Move to approve.
Any changes made on that?
Yeah, Mayor, this is Rick Navarro.
Yes, sir.
The, the only change that was made from the action at the G B I C board meeting was the effective date. If you recall, there was a question about the date being the eleventh. We did, I did talk to counsel, opposing counsel, and he agreed that the effective date would be today instead. So I made that amendment, given that, that, that agreement needs to be ratified by the city council, by the city commission. So that's the only change. Otherwise, it's the exact same instrument.
Okay, thank you. We did have a motion. Is there a second?
I have another question. Is this a vote that requires a majority of the commission or just a majority of those present? If Mr. DeCaus can help us with that one, or Mr. Navarro.
This is Renal DeCaus. Can you hear me? Yes. A majority vote. But Rick, what do you think?
Yeah, just a majority vote.
Of those present?
It's a confirmation, it's a confirmation of those. Yeah, you have a quorum, right?
Yes.
Okay, so a majority of those present, just to clarify the item.
Thank you.
Very good. There was a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
We have one nay from Commissioner Golansky, and the item passes. Thank you.
Our next item is public hearings. Item number one, public hearing and action regarding city Item number one, public hearing and action regarding city towing rotation list application by Steve Sosa, Three S Towing LLC pursuant to chapter one ten dash sixty-three of the City of Brownsville Code of Ordinances Police Department.
Mayor, City Commission, I'm Commander James Pascal. This is an application by Mr. Steve Sosa doing business as Three S Towing. Next slide. This is for a Class One record permit in order to be placed on their city record rotation list. The address for the business is twelve eighty-four Dr. Hugh Emerson Road, FM thirty-two forty-eight here in Brownsville, Texas. Next slide. Mr. Sosa also works with his father, Jose Sosa, who owns CNA Towing, which is already in the city record rotation list. Next slide. This is aerial photo of the business Three S Towing. Next slide. Here's a photo of the wrecker to for Three S Towing. Next slide. Perfect. The police department has conducted an inspection of the wrecker service and will issue a permit under City Ordinance Section one ten dash six-three pursuant to commission approval. Next slide. This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Is anybody here on this item? Okay, we have a motion to close public hearing.
To close?
We have a motion to close. There a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, I'll entertain action on the item.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Item number two, public hearing and action regarding city rotation list application by Michael E. Trejo, A Plus Towing pursuant to chapter one ten dash sixty-three of the City of Brownsville Code of Ordinances Police Department.
Mayor, City Commission, this is an application by Mr. Michael Trejo doing business as A Plus Towing. Next slide. This is for a Class One record permit in order to be placed on the city record rotation list. The address for the business is twenty-eight fifty Dana Avenue, Lot B here in Brownsville, Texas. Mr. Trejo currently has one other wrecker company on the city's rec rotation list, which is Ace Towing. Yeah, stay right there on the arrow. Go go back one, please. Go back, go back, go back, right there. Here's the arrow photo of the business A Plus Towing. And then next slide. One more slide, there you go. That's the tow truck assigned to the business. And next slide. That's the inspection checklist. The police department has conducted an inspection of the wrecker service and will issue a permit under City Ordinance Section one ten six-three pursuant to commission approval. Next slide. This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here on this item?
Motion to close public hearing?
Thank you. Have a motion to close. There a second?
Second.
Should we close in a second? Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, do we have a motion on the item?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Item four, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number twenty-twenty-one eleven hundred point sixty-three to repeal and replace chapter ninety-four, section ninety-four dash fifty-seven B Historic Preservation Plan Adoption and adopt the twenty-twenty-one Historic Preservation Plan Planning and Redevelopment.
We missed one.
Lori, we we totally skipped over number three.
Commissioner, my name is Juan Valdez.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll re-read it again. I I had wrote my notes and, okay, I apologize. I'm sorry, public here. Item number three, public hearing and action regarding city towing rotation list application by Alfredo Velasquez, AV Towing pursuant to chapter one ten dash sixty-three of the City of Brownsville Code of Ordinances Police Department.
Mayor, City Commission, this is an application by Mr. Alfredo Velasquez doing business as AV Towing. This is for a Class One record permit, go ahead and exit, that's it, in order to be placed on the city record rotation list. The address for the business is fifty-seven twenty-seven South West Road, Lot C here in Brownsville. Stay right there. Next slide. Uh, go back one, please. One slide. Back to the business. There you, thank you. Mr. Velasquez currently has two other records on companies on the city record rotation rotation list, which is Al Tejano Towing and Al Star Towing. Next slide. This aerial photo of the business, AV Towing. Next slide. Here's a photo of the wrecker assigned to the business. Next slide. The Brownsville Police Department has conducted an inspection of the wrecker service and will issue a permit under City Ordinance Section one ten six-three pursuant to commission approval. Next slide. Questions, comments, public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Is anybody here on this item? Okay, do we have a motion to close?
I'll move to close.
You have a motion to close. There a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Uh, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, do I have a motion on the item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Your motion to approve in a second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, so now item four, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash eleven hundred point sixty-three to repeal and replace chapter ninety-four, section ninety-four dash fifty-seven B Historic Preservation Plan Adoption and adopt the twenty-twenty-one Historic Preservation Plan Planning and Redevelopment.
Good afternoon again, Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners. My name is Juan Valdez. I'm the Director of the Service and Officer, and I'm here to introduce the twenty-twenty-one Historic Preservation Plan. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide explains why do we have an historic preservation plan. It's simply that, uh, Brownsville is a more historical, uh, city in the in the valley. You have some data there that really explain you that it's, uh, an incentive program that really was established in nineteen ninety-one. So we have a a large history within the historic preservation plan in this city. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide, uh, pretends to explain the different designations that we have. The National Register of Historic Places and the recorded Texas Historical Landmarks are decided by the Texas Historical Commission and the local designated primary resources and substantial rehabilitations are being designated and approved by the Historic Preservation Commission and later on by the planning and zoning and later go to themselves. Next slide. This is the process. You can see that, uh, first of all, is the Historic Preservation, uh, Commission, uh, then the planning and zoning, City Commission, and then the participating entities. And finally, we introduce everything to the town and municipal district so they can be prepared and, uh, uh, and applicate the corresponding tax exemptions to the, uh, to the taxes here. Next slide, please. So I'm introducing here the twenty-twenty, uh, Historic Preservation Plan in order to, that you can see perfectly the differences. In twenty-twenty, we approved ninety-five properties that were spread in those that you can see here in this slide. Next slide, please. The value of those ninety-five properties were ninety-five thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars. These are some examples that were included in that, uh, uh, plan due substantial rehab. Next slide, please. Here you would see that from ninety-five, we go into ninety-nine properties. Uh, these four properties more is because some of of the substantial rehab simply have a deadline. So we have more new substantial rehab and some new recorded Texas Historical Landmarks. And this is next slide. And these ninety-nine properties worth one hundred and forty thousand dollars. So as you can see, let us see that the difference are four properties more, more for the for and and the cost is ten thousand dollars more of tax burden for the city. These are some examples of the houses. You can see repeated there, the, uh, Fernando Champion, the Theodore Woburn House. The last year was substantially rehabbed and the property owner went into the designation of the house and he got it finally. Next slide, please. So the staff recommendation is to approve the twenty-twenty-one Historic Preservation Plan, generally speaking, ninety-nine properties, one hundred and forty thousand dollars of cost. Next slide. So you have any questions? I'm very pleased to to answer you.
Does anybody have any questions for, uh, Mr. Valdez? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here on this item? There a motion to close?
Motion to close?
We have a motion to close. There a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Do we have a motion on the item?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, we can move on to items for individual consideration. Item number one, consideration and action to approve the following resolutions. El Hardin Hotel Resolution Number twenty-twenty-one dash zero one four and El Hardin Resolution Number twenty-twenty-one dash zero two zero, identifying the project as a concerted revitalization effort project and El Hardin Resolution Number twenty-twenty-one dash zero nineteen, identified as a project located in a census tract with a poverty rate about forty percent. And two, TCC Village LP Resolution Number twenty-twenty-one dash zero one five and three, Price Lofts Resolution Number twenty-twenty-one dash zero one six to express the City of Brownsville's support for the project's applications to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs Housing Tax Credit Program. TC, Texas BCC Village LP, right, price residential construction is seeking a fifteen hundred dollar permit fee incentive. Price Lofts is seeking a five hundred dollar permit fee incentive. And El Hardin Hotel Project is seeking a one thousand dollar permit fee incentive, planning and redevelopment.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the, uh, Commission. The TDHCA has issued a call for projects. Uh, there are three affordable housing developers that have come forward and requested, uh, resolutions of support for their applications to the TDHCA for tax credit, uh, project grants. Uh, the local resolutions represent only one, uh, variable of dozens of variables the TDHCA considers when selecting finalists for their grants. Uh, the, uh, as Lori outlined, the resolution, the first one is the Brownsville Housing Authority. They are actually seeking three different resolutions, one for project support, one to certify the project takes place in a forty uh, poverty rate census tract, and the final one that the project contributes to, uh, concerted to the concerted revitalization plan. Uh, the El Hardin Project will have forty-five units, and we did include a schematic and a site plan in your packet. The second project is the Price Lofts Project, uh, that are only seeking a resolution of support. There's fifty-four, uh, that's located at fifty-four South Price Road. Uh, it'll have ninety-six multifamily, uh, units in that project. And the final one is the BCC Village and the Country Club. Uh, they're seeking a resolution of support. That's located near Mallorca Court in Mallorca Avenue, and that'll be a thirty-six, uh, unit project. And the staff's recommendation is to approve all, uh, three res, all five resolutions. With that, we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Hey, hearing no questions, I'll, uh, entertain a motion on the item.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I have a quick comment.
Yes, sir.
Um, I just want to say to the public, you know, on the El Hardin Project, the Housing Authority is acting as its own developer and like the Grants Department, we, um, are trying to be creative, uh, at the Housing Authority and and innovate and bring money into the community. And, um, should the El Hardin Project be awarded, any developer fee paid to the developer will stay in the community at the Housing Authority. And, um, I believe there's only two housing authorities that actually do this, Brownsville and El Paso. So, uh, kudos to everyone there and, uh, fingers crossed on the project.
Thanks, Commissioner. Let's hope, let's hope it gets off the ground very soon. Um, we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional, uh, discussion on this? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Item two. Item two, consideration and action to approve the Historic Preservation Plan Schedule A Planning and Redevelopment.
Good afternoon again, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners. Next slide, please. So from those, uh, ninety-nine properties that we were mentioning before, ne- next slide, please. There is no slide, sir. Yeah, we are. Just pre- please, how is the weather? There are no slides. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, oh, all right. Yeah, could you go to the Schedule A, please? No, move forward. The next slide. Next one. Next, please. Next again. Okay, go, yeah, go back today, please. All right. So, all right, uh, this, this, uh, Schedule A contain, uh, ninety-six properties of the ninety-nine. So they are almost all the the, uh, preservation plan, and, uh, we, uh, submit here to for for the approval proposals.
Okay, is there any, um, motions on this item?
So, so there's ninety-nine properties, but you're not giving us the list, or did you previously provide it, or?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, we, we said it, uh, but, uh, unfortunately, uh, we cannot, we cannot show, uh, here in the, in the presentation. But this, this, uh, ninety-six, ninety-six properties, uh, regards to the, to the property owners in in Brownsville because the, uh, Schedule B and C are, those are slightly, uh, different.
Uh, Mayor, Commissioners, this is Helen Ramirez. In the, uh, Historic Preservation Packet, there is a schedule, Excel schedule. There is ninety-five prop, five properties, ninety-six properties that are identified, which cover the majority of the properties. Um, the next items, which is Schedule B and Schedule C, only cover three separate properties. But the majority of the properties in the Schedule A, which I don't know that you want me to read out all ninety-six properties, but those are the majority that are covered, uh, under this, uh, tax credit.
I I don't think you need to read them all out, but I'm going to go ahead and have Madam Secretary note my abstention on all three of these. Secretary note my abstention on all three of these items, A, B, and C.
Just so everybody knows, the schedule was listed, I just found it in our packet on page two sixty-two, I'm sorry, two sixty-one, two sixty-two, and two sixty, two sixty-one, two sixty-two, and then what appears to be page two fifty-eight as well. So it lists which properties are on there and what schedule it's part of. That's the only list I could find.
I was looking for the packet and I couldn't find it all the way back to Friday. Was it sent prior to that?
I get hard copies, Commissioner. I honestly don't know how how you get them, if you get them electronically or not. I honestly don't know, but I do get hard copies, I request hard copies.
I think they come through that civic clerk or something, or they they used to. But anyway, like I said, I'm going to abstain on the next three, those three schedules.
Very good. Commissioner Neese is abstaining from all three, just for, just to be noted. This is action item number two. Do we have any motions on this?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Item three, consideration and action to approve the Historic Preservation Plan, Schedule B, Planning and Redevelopment.
Mayor and Commissioner, Schedule B lists two properties, one-two-two-zero, two-one-two-two-six, East Adams Street, and the second property is six-one-one-one West Lovey Street. Those are the only two properties identified in Schedule B for consideration.
There's another, Mr. Miedes, it's six forty-seven East St. Charles.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion on this item?
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And Commissioner Neese and myself are abstaining on this item. And counsel, that's three out of the five present, is that a pass?
As long as we have four voting members, we have a quorum. If if the two abstentions don't give us four voters, then we wouldn't have a quorum for this item.
Say that again?
We need a quorum, we need at least four voting members. Do we have three out of four, is that what you said?
We have five commissioners present, there are three votes on this item and two abstentions, which means it's a majority of those present.
We wouldn't have a quorum then, we need at least four voting members. And I guess at this stage, the Commission could table the item for next meeting, or any one of the abstentions can vote to reconsider.
Okay. Okay, well then, is there a motion to table item three then?
Motion to table.
Motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, this item is tabled for the next meeting.
Consideration and action to approve the Historic Preservation Plan, Schedule C, Planning and Redevelopment.
Mayor and Commissioner, there's one property considered in Schedule B that addresses one five five, Kaya Anakwa.
There a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
There a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any additional discussion? Those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Please note my abstention.
Okay, so counsel, that's going to be the same situation, so is there a motion to table this item? I'll go ahead and make the motion to table, is there a second on this?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, those in favor of tabling this item?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay, this item will be tabled to the next meeting, thank you.
Item five, consideration and action to acknowledge the Finance Director's Financial Statements and Cash Investment Report for the City of Brownsville for the first quarter ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty, Financial Services.
Is there going to be a presentation on this?
Yes. Good evening, distinguished members of the Brownsville Texas City Commission and the Honorable Mayor Mendez presiding over today's commission meeting. My name is Gustavo Rose, Accountant Three for the Finance Department headed by Director Renato. Finance will be presenting unaudited financial statements for the quarter ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty, also known as fiscal year twenty twenty-one, quarter one. As part of the agenda package, detailed financial reports for fiscal twenty twenty-one, quarter one, were submitted. This presentation will be a summary of the highlights of those financial reports. Some of the topics covered will be the financial highlights, the general fund summary, other fund summary, aviation tourism, debt services, and investment reports. Next. So the financial highlights are the general fund estimated unassigned fund balance for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-one, Q one, is forty-three point six million. The estimated unassigned fund balance increased eight point six million from fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, quarter one, fund balance of thirty-eight million. The ad valorem taxes, seventy-nine point three of the tax levy has been collected through the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, quarter one. This compares to seventy-four point one for the same period as fiscal year twenty twenty, quarter one. So it's pretty much trending similar to prior year. Sales taxes are above last fiscal year's numbers by three point eight eight percent or hundred and ninety-five point six K and twenty-four point nine percent or one point oh five million above budget projections. BPUBs, cash transfers, are up three point eight eight percent or ninety-six thousand above budget projections. Actuals decreased by fourteen point one percent or three hundred and ninety point five compared to the same period last fiscal year. Building permits values increased by sixty-six point five percent or twenty-three point four million for the same period as last year. The total number of permits for the decreased decreased by three point five percent. That can be further explained on slide twenty-two and twenty-three. Unemployment at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, two-one was eleven point three. It's down slightly from eleven point seven at the end of prior fiscal, the prior fiscal quarter. BPUB utility charges have increased by three percent or thirty-one thousand for the same period as last fiscal year. And the Veterans Bridge, based on receipts through the end of fiscal, through the end of the current quarter, revenues have decreased fourteen percent or a hundred and twelve point four thousand for the same period and twenty-two point five and a decrease of twenty-two point five or two hundred point seven thousand under budget projections. Hotel motel tax receipts decreased thirty, thirty-seven point five percent or ninety-one thou, ninety-one thousand less than the same period as fiscal year twenty twenty, Q one. Next. All right. So the general, this slide is the general fund revenues and expenditures. As you can note, the total year-to-date, the total annual budget amounts are a hundred and four million. And as you notice, the, we're slightly above the, the current quarter's budget. And expenses are basically trending with budget, so we are we're good there. All right, next. This slide here is sales tax revenue. Sales tax revenue is trending quarter, quarter over quarter. Next. Then the veterans, this next slide, the Veterans Bridge, also trending quarter over quarter. Next. Our cash transfer, this slide represents our cash transfers over, over the last versus the last fiscal year as highlighted in the, in the notes at the beginning. So general fund summary. Next. So here we have the general fund summary. We began at thirty-eight million. We have budgeted a hundred and four million for budgeted revenues minus a hundred and thirteen point three million for budget expenditures. We estimate that unassigned fund balance should be twenty-nine point four at the end of the year. Next. Here we have the general fund revenues comparison. As you can note, there, there is a fees in certain, the two things to highlight here are the fees and services where we see a decrease in vital, vital fees for vital statistics, library fees, fire department fees, and ambulance service fees. Another item to highlight is sales tax, which represents two months because of the timing difference, which we have one, one month of information that will be presented in the next, in the next financial. Next. This is the, the expenditures. If you note, the expenditures are all trending with, are all trending with budget. So where our, our, our position is where we expected. Next. So the rest, the rest of the details after, after other fund summaries, I can go on, are all detailed information. This is a net position, fund balance summary by special revenues, debt services, and enterprises. Next. City of Brownsville Public Transfer Fund Summary. Nothing to, everything was highlighted at the beginning, next. All right, next. 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 Fiscal year twenty twenty-one. All right, next. Next. All right, take it to the end, and I think from there, the rest is supplementary information. And that concludes the presentation. If anybody has any questions?
Is there any questions? Okay, do we have a motion to acknowledge the report?
Motion to acknowledge.
We have a motion to acknowledge in a second, is there any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes, thank you.
Item six, consideration and action to award change order number thirteen to Spa Glass Contractors Incorporated, addressing final punch items and field changes for the terminal project at Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport in the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars Airport Department.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Brian Walker with the City Manager's Office, Assistant City Manager and Aviation Administrator. This is a breakdown, same breakdown we presented for the previous, I don't know how many commission meetings for each of the additional items that we had proposed to include in the project. This is the yellow, what we're addressing here is change order number thirteen, the yellow line in the middle, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. That wraps up all of the change orders, the field changes, and should, with all intent, this should close out the spa glass contract for the building and all of the ancillary costs of that as we continue wrapping up the airside portion with a different contractor. So it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand for these field changes and the airport administration's recommending approval.
Okay, do we have any questions for Mr. Walker? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven, consideration and action to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the City of Brownsville and the Brownsville Independent School District in collaboration and administration of vaccinations to immunize the populace against COVID-19 in a safe and effective manner, City Manager's Office.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The City of Brownsville has been working with the Brownsville ISB with regard to collaborating together on vaccinations. And we have, and we propose to you today where the BISB will also be reviewing their participation in this memorandum of understanding. Here it determines, it speaks to the state of Texas authorizing the City of Brownsville as a vaccination hub and administering vaccines to our populace against COVID-19. Therefore, we desire to enter into an MOU with BISB to be able to use BISB facilities and staff and assist the city administer the vaccines to the general public to expand our ability to vaccinate larger numbers of individuals in a safe and effective manner to coordinate with the ISB administration and staff through the utilization of their school facilities, or at times we can also vaccinate off-site, but this authorizes us to utilize their facilities as needed and to coordinate with the ISB administration and staff with the use of eligible, qualified, and well-trained staff ready to volunteer and assist us in our endeavor. Next slide. Under this MOU, the city does have obligations in terms that that we are charged with the supervision and direction of a medical doctor properly credentialed to practice medicine, medicine within the state of Texas and ensure quality control, that we meet all applicable laws and regulations with regard to dispensing the vaccine, supplying the necessary equipment, ensuring all personnel is properly trained, credentialed, and qualified. We're responsible for the proper disposal of medical waste and disinfection of the facility and costs, we will be responsible for all costs associated with organizing and conducting vaccination services. And also we're responsible for noting for any BISB of any potential hazards at the vaccination site. We also will remain maintaining insurance for the liability incurred by the city with regard to using their facilities. Next slide, please. The obligations of the ISB would be to agree to coordinate with the city in the selection of a vaccination site and in one of the specific facilities and the selection of district personnel to assist the city with administering vaccines. But therefore, there, this would authorize the use of their facilities if needed. And would also continue to, the ISB will continue to compensate their own district staff for assisting the city in administering vaccines. That would be on their cost. The city agrees that no fees would be charged to the Brownsville Independent School District for the operation of a vaccination site. And then also with regard to supervision, the vaccine And then also with regard to supervision, the vaccination program of, and oversight will be under the direction and responsibility of the city of Brownsville. And normally that would be from our, um, Department of Health and Wellness, and I also have Dr. Rodriguez there, should you have any questions regarding the MOU. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Helen. Is there anybody who has any questions for either Helen or, or Art?
I'm glad this is happening. Um, at the past two events that I volunteered, we've had the ISD teachers volunteering to do the data entry, um, running the lines to make sure that people filled out their consent forms, uh, directly. And then I also saw school nurses from BISD helping vaccinate people. So I think this is a wonderful partnership. And hopefully we can get school staff vaccinated sooner so that kids can go back to school, um, if, if appropriate. So I'm in favor.
I, I could not agree more. They've been a wonderful partner.
Definitely, they've helped out a lot. And, uh, without their coordination and, and the efforts of their, their volunteers, we wouldn't be able to do this. So. Thank you. Is there, uh, any questions or any additional statements? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, the BISB will also be taking, um, consideration of this MOU today as well.
Okay. We have a motion.
Motion to.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Item eight, consideration and action to enter into a memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Brownsville, Texas, and the Brownsville Independent School District for the purpose of establishing and achieving various goals and objectives relating to the establishment of services to aid in the safe reunification of migrant families in our community, City Manager's Office.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The city has experienced, um, the need to, because of the migrants that have, um, been dropped off by, um, border patrol at our B Metro, uh, station. And as we help transport those families or assist them to their transition to their final destination, which is many times out of the, even of the state of Texas or not in the city of Brownsville. And so the city is providing that transportation hub, which is either through our airport or through our B Metro, um, terminal station, which has long-distance bus carriers that take them to their final destination. Um, so do we experience a larger number of, um, migrant families and that, uh, that are dropped off by border patrol? What we would like to do is proactively enter into an MOU with the ISB as, um, and provide services to migrants in our community as they endeavor reuniting with their families here in other parts of the United States. The ISB, as you may know, does have former classrooms and facilities that are currently closed and available, such as the Sacagawea Elementary School. And so they are willing to provide it as a use, as a stinking area to provide services to immigrants free of charge to the city of Brownsville. As a precautionary measure, should we experience a large number of, um, migrants and their families, um, as they seek to be reunited, um, in other parts of our nation. The ci, the ci, city of Brownsville in collaboration with community nonprofit organizations agree to staff and operate the facility for the intended purpose, ensuring that the facility, of course, is left in a tidy manner after its use, disinfecting where necessary and providing, um, a clean and cleaning area and a shelter for these families as they transition to their final destination. Next slide. I think that's the last one. So. Okay, so that is the last slide. Um, I do have, um, our EOC here, Odie, and I'll, and you have any questions regarding, regarding, um, our current situation with the city as we transition to find their families and their, to their final destination. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I have a question. Um, Helen, what kind of numbers are we seeing, uh, currently?
I'm gonna, I have Odie here that she can speak about.
Odie's not there. I can answer, Commissioner. Um, there's two, there's kind of two separate things going on right now. Right now, we're getting, uh, family, family units. Uh, I think the high number has been somewhere in the seventies, approaching eighty. Uh, typically it's somewhere between fifty and sixty. I think yesterday we had over sixty. Um, and that is, uh, like I said, family units. We're gonna start to see individuals, uh, probably at the end of the week. Uh, if not a couple days later, they're gonna be coming over from the migrant camp. It's, uh, a result of the MPP uh, measures that were previously in place. Those individuals are the ones that are waiting for court dates. So those individuals, uh, will probably start coming over at the end of the week. Um, I did have a conversation with the board director, and he assured me that there would not be more than uh, seventy people from that, uh, NPP program coming over at one time or in a day. So we're probably looking, if you combine that with what we've been seeing, we may end up having over a hundred. Uh, it just depends on, on when they may be released. But Odie, do you have any other info?
Let's keep in mind that the, the, anything we're getting right now are the ones that are crossing through the river. So the NPP ones that the mayor is talking about, those are the ones from the encampment. So there's gonna be a little bit more people that we'll be getting. So we're gonna be looking at possibly, we're gonna be getting seventy from the encampment. And then plus the seventy, eighty that we get are the bases. We'll be getting about a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixteen events per day.
Thank you.
Yeah, I believe we had a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Item nine, consideration and action on resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one-three of the city of Brownsville, Texas, requesting the members of the eighty-seventh legislative session of the state of Texas to support legislation that provides stewardship, health, and well-being, and connectivity for local and state parks, City Manager's Office.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner. Um, as part of our member organization, Texas Recreation and Parks Society, supporting the legislative platform for this eighty-seventh session. So to protect and enhance our investments in all public and parks and open space. Uh, that includes the sporting goods sales tax to oppose free weekend, um, sporting goods. Tax-free weekend on sporting goods. Oppose appropriation riders to the Texas Recreation and Parks account. Support conservation of open space and making public lands accessible to support tree preservation and federal funding, support of the Land Water and Conservation Fund, the Sports Fish Restoration and Boat Access Program. Support the United States Department of Transportation, Recreation, and Water and Natural Resources. Support conservation, uh, support rights and access to recreational amenities. And unfunded mandates to oppose exemptions that substantially erode the tax base or oppose tax limitations on municipalities. And overall, to increase, uh, activity and improve health and wellness by utilizing parks. Um, to improve our overall health and wellness of our community. And, uh, as funding for services and programs to ensure access for people with disabilities. And support legislation in reducing the obesity and diabetes epidemic. Support funding for the connection of communities to nature and the outdoors. And then create livable and safe, responsible communities, support, uh, safe pathways, trails, create safety zones, support transportation, and inclusion of parks and recreation community centers. Uh, and the overall positive economic, economic impact from the, uh, Parks and Recreation Department industry. And, uh, I'm here if you have any questions.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. And a second, is there any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten, consideration and action to enter into a memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Brownsville, Texas and the Brownsville Historical Association for the remodel of the Old City Cemetery Center and the relocation of the costumes of the Americas Museum exhibit, City Manager's Office.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners. Marina Folesi, Assistant City Manager. Before you, we have a memorandum of understanding between the Brownsville Historical Association, BHA, and the city of Brownsville. This is to continue the partnership with BHA. And this is particularly to supporting the remodel of the Old City Cemetery and also the relocation of the costume of the, of the Americas Museum exhibits. The costume of the Americas recently merged into BHA in December, and it became effective January first of this year. The costume of the Americas, uh, is coordinating with the Children's Museum for temporary usage of storage space while they transition. And the Children's Museum is, will be expanding its research at Dean Porter Park. So this, uh, MOU highlights the, the, we're gently providing museum space dedicated to the costume of the Americas Museum exhibit. The city, the recommendation, the city providing funding not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this remodel and transition. It serves a public purpose for tourism and provides a cultural museum for the community. As far as the MOU details, it is through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. On, and then the city's responsibility with its internal services departments will provide maintenance and facility management, as well as facilitation with the different departments in the city during the remodel, including coordination with our city's planning and redevelopment department. For BHA, coordinate with the internal services department. And also provide a final description of the support that's needed. And with the funding not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand, that's from the city. The BHA will provide cost sharing in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars and will ensure completion of the project. And will continue coordination with the Children's Museum to start. That concludes the summary of the MOU. Are there any questions?
Marina, is this a one-time obligation of a hundred fifty?
Yes, sir. This is a one-time obligation of a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. Do you have any questions on this? Okay, we have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is executive session. Closed session for attorney consultation pursuant to section five fifty-one point zero-seven-one subsection two Texas Government Code to receive legal advice in connection with the city's rights, duties, privileges, and obligations. And pursuant to section five fifty-one point zero-eight-seven of the Texas Government Code to discuss the offer of financial and other incentives to a business prospect of the city of Brownsville seeks to have locate within the city, Project Connect.
For the record, I'd like to note that I have to abstain as I have a conflict of interest, so I will not be participating in the executive session, and I'll sign off now, um, for the rest of the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion to go to executive session?
Motion to go to executive session.
We have a motion. And a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll see you all in the executive session.
It is now six thirty-five PM, and we are going into executive session.
James, can you hear me? I don't see Commissioner Neese here. It's me, Commissioner Cowan, Commissioner Gallin. I don't see...
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see Commissioner Neese yet either.
I've had two call-in users join. Commissioner Neese, are you one of the call-in users, sir?
Log on, just kidding.
Commissioner Neese, are you here?
Yeah, I think that was him, Mayor, I heard him, something breaking up that I'm trying to log on. Yeah, I think that was him, Mayor. I heard him, something breaking up that I'm trying to log on. I'm pretty sure it was him.
Yeah, one of them's me, Allison.
Yes, he's going to, he's getting on right now.
Okay.
Is Commissioner Nies in?
I'm here, I think.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Okay, I'll read the item. Possible action on items discussed in executive session. Item one, consideration and action regarding the offer of financial and other incentives for Project Connect in the form of conveying approximately thirty acres of city-owned property located at Jaramo Baco number one thirty-one in East Brownsville.
Do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, and I have a motion to get my power back on too.
Wow. Well, second that. You're out and I'm out. We have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye, stay warned, guys.
Those opposed? Motion's adjourned. Thank you. Take care, Ben. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Bye-bye.
It is now seven oh-two PM. There being no further business to come before the commission, upon duly made motion, the meeting has adjourned. Everyone, have a good night.